It is 7:01 on Tuesday, March 28, 2017. This is the 1,779th meeting of the City Council of the City of College Place. Ms. Nyhanen, would you please offer a prayer and our prayers?
Okay, Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come to do the business of the city. We ask that you would give us the right things to choose, Lord, that will be good for our community. I thank you for our loyal and wonderful staff that we have in this council, Lord, and I thank you for the blessings that you have given us this week. And I ask, Father, that you would watch over our military that serves our country. I thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
My little agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now our public commentary. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please come to the microphone stage, your name and address.
My name is Maria Santiano. Hi. I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? My name is Maria Santiano. My address is 6, it's a cross, my address, 633 West Wetman Drive. And my comment and request is with regards to Ford Street in the town of Hawaii. I've heard some comments, and I don't know if there's any validity to those comments, but I'd like to address those and have the city consider those as you continue to plan for growth and to improve our streets. So I've heard that there will be two apartment complexes going up behind the school, Wal-Wal High Academy. And as a parent, a student that's at school now and another one coming up in a couple of years, I would have a big concern with apartment complexes being so far through the school for obvious and for different reasons. If that is not correct, I would encourage the city to continue what's not allowing apartment complexes in that area. And the other concern is, it also has to do with Ford Street. I've heard that the city plans to extend Ford Street in between the athletic field and Waba. And again, as a parent of our students that goes there, that is a concern to me. But going beyond that, the enrollment of both schools are significant for those people who work there and for the people, some of us who have moved here because of those schools. So almost 10 years ago, I moved here to teach my kids to go to Rogers in Waba and then they hopefully to the university. And so if the city continues to plan, I would encourage you and urge you to consider the difficulties that those schools are having in continued enrollment and recruiting and the changes to street finance, to streets overall make a difference in their continued success. And I think that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council, please come forward and state your name and address. One final time, anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one else, we have a public hearing, historic preservation.
Mr. Consent Agenda? To approve the consent agenda?
Oh. All seconded. Moving right along. The consent agenda's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing all in favor, please apply by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Ms. Shur. Now we have a public hearing on the circuit.
Well, I think we can all agree that this is such an exciting topic that Harvey was just couldn't wait to get to.
You have no idea.
So this is two parts. First part, well, I'll cover the background on historic preservation and then you'll hold a public hearing and then you'll close that and then we'll move into the second phase of it, which will be asking you to approve the ordinance. So historic preservation, it's a planning goal under GMA, it's an optional planning goal under the Growth Management Act, which is GMA, which I will further refer to throughout And so the RCW, the goal of historic preservation is to encourage preservation of land sites and structures that have historical or archaeological significance. Our comprehensive plan does include some goals and policies, and they are to encourage retention and reuse of buildings with historic value, prepare an inventory of historic buildings, promote rehabilitation programs, reversing neighborhood deterioration, and encouraging the retention of structures identified as having historical significance, which are still in sound condition or can be rehabilitated. So that's the planning that we've done, the state's done, and then there's the federal level of historic preservation that also supports what we're doing. So what we will do, once the ordinance is approved, is we will then establish a historic preservation commission and become a certified local government, which is the CLG. And sorry, I don't have that spelled out for you, but so once we become a certified local government, we can then, we can develop a list of historic properties in the city, which is the surveys. We'll establish the historic preservation commission. So the ordinance establishes the seven-member commission. Two of those members need to be professionals in the field of either architecture or landscape architecture, planners, people that have backgrounds in historical preservation, or that expertise, I should say. We'll have a public participation portion of that to encourage property owners that have been identified as having historical structures to get their properties listed on the historic register. And then the city is responsible for maintaining that inventory of historical, that inventory of historic structures. So benefits of becoming a CLG, where the city is eligible to apply to the Department of Historic Preservation, DAP, for grants. One, the first one we'll apply for would be to identify historic structures in the city. We could develop design guidelines for, if we had a historic district that we identified. And then, of course, educating property owners, there's grants out there for that as well, and website support, developing walking tours, which can, you know, be part of a tourism activity. And then the real big one for the property owners themselves is the special property tax valuation, which enables, and the next slide goes into that in deeper. So if you're doing a major renovation of historic structure beyond 25% of the assessed valuation, you can, if those renovations qualify and the commission reviews those requests for improvements, if they qualify, then that actual amount that's invested in those properties can be deducted from their assessed valuation. So you can see the diagram there where they've spent $150,000 on a structure that's assessed at 225, and they subtract that $150,000, so their tax, their assessed value is then $75,000. And that's good for 10 years. There's conditions that are applied to it. You know, you couldn't try to demolish the structure during that 10-year period, or you'd have to repay the taxes benefit that you reached from the program.
One question.
Yeah.
Is that the assessed value after the rehab or before?
That's, so you take the assessed value before the rehab and you subtract the improvements that you're making. So going forward, we'll establish a historic preservation commission if the ordinance is approved. We'll apply to DAP for CLG status, which will, that's the actual certification that says that we have, the city has all their ducks in a row to become a certified local We'll request DAP to do a building assessment of the structures. And this isn't always a guaranteed thing that they'll do, but they have gone in in other communities and they'll go through and look at your structures and do an assessment of them, the quality of their construction and their state of, their condition, basically. And then we'll apply for the, to actually do the survey of the properties that we have in town to identify the key properties that have historic significance. We'll do public outreach to those particular properties to try to encourage them to then apply to the city, to the commission, to get them on the list of historic properties. And then as we go through that process, then we'll, as we get applicants, we'll develop that list of historic properties, registered properties in the city. We'll maintain those on our zoning, in our zoning ordinance, zoning, our zoning matters and stuff. And then we'll work with properties to get them the special tax valuation. So any questions about the nuts and bolts of the actual chapter that we'll be adopting, that we have presented? Like I said, it's a seven-member commission. We'll meet once a month initially, and then as the program gets established, we'll meet on a needs basis. The, if I can just say one thing, it's a voluntary program, so the city won't be going around and nominating properties that have been identified as having historical significance. It'll be upon the property owners to request their, that listing.
That was my question.
Okay. I thought it might be.
Other questions?
What's the process of communicating to the public if this goes into effect, that this is available? Is that website, newsletter? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, we'll definitely have a historic preservation page on our website, but as we develop, as the, you know, when we apply for the grant and it's awarded to us to actually have, have a survey done, then we'll do actual individual outreach to those particular properties that have been identified and trying to set up one-on-one meetings with them and let them know the benefit of historic preservation and the options that are available to them.
Well, so we'll open the public hearing. For historic preservation, anybody wishing to testify before the College Place City Council on the proposed historic preservation ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address.
Stanley Green, Gilbert County 95 College Place. I'm really pleased to see the city moving forward, as I've been disappointed to see some historic structures destroyed over the many years I've lived in or visited this community. So I hope this will help preserve some of that heritage. I have a couple of questions. One is, are landscape elements covered under this kind of program? And the other question is, does this create any provision for creation of historic districts?
Would you like me to answer this question? I'm not aware that there are any, that landscaping is covered. We're not like, like a tree city. We don't have a historic tree or an ordinance that preserves historic trees. I can look into that, but regarding the historic districts, yes, it does allow us to create historic districts.
Thank you.
I just want to add, there are, there is a historic tree society, and trees in College Place are on that list, but I don't know how you have to get a whole information. I know they can plant one tree, you also cut down.
I just want to add something about the historic trees. That can be approached on a topic at a later council meeting, because one of the things that we'll be exploring is a little bit of a voluntary tree code, so we could get some tree grants from the state and the historic landmark trees. There'll be an element of that that falls into the whole Arbor Day program.
Anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council on historic preservation ordinance? Please step forward, state your name and address. One final time, anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council on historic preservation ordinance? Please step forward, state your name and address. I would accept a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved on this seven. It's the second. Second, Ms. Shur. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Historic preservation, public hearing is closed.
Well, I don't really have anymore to add, but we have an ordinance before you, ordinance number 17009, establishing Chapter 1510, historic preservation.
You will be approved, ordinance.
All seconded.
Remove and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a.
Mr. Jefferson, you have a question?
No, I just want to be recognized before I made a motion, but my, I know what to do next time.
I just wanted to follow up on the historic district. My understanding is that this is a necessary precondition for historic districts, but it doesn't require us to make historic districts. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Seeing none, all in favor of Agenda Bill 17003, ordinance 17009, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Your passes your name and address.
Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson, follow.
Well, first of all, I'd like to recognize the Executive Director of the Mountain Humane Society, Sarah Archer, the March of the Series.
Free kittens for everyone.
Don't tell that to students, 98.
Thank you, Mayor. So this proposed ordinance was introduced the last council meeting. The changes in here from last time is for licensure, it's just focusing on dog licenses. And the whole premise behind this code change is we had dual animal codes. We actually have a Title VI animal code and then an animal section in the said Zelman code. And in the existing code, sections that pertain to rabies, dangerous dogs, it improperly quantify when the Wal-Wal County Department of Health would be involved, so this does that. It also sets up legal definitions for the animal control officer. It just has everything easy-to-follow manner. Reason that we approach this is what's coming up next in the agenda is potentially moving the animal control services over Blue Mountain Humane Society. And right now, the existing code is a hodgepodge of various topics at the time, if you will, so it makes it very hard to enforce and understand, especially when there's dual sections. So that's pretty much in a nutshell what this encompasses.
Questions for Mr. Jefferson?
No question, but I just want to thank you for cleaning this up. It's something that we needed for a long time and few people have really understood, so.
The seven?
I have a question. I'm sorry, I just noticed this. Chapter 620 in document, it looks like there's a typo because 620-020, dog and cats minimal impoundment, and then it says, impounded dogs and cats should be kept in the animal shelter for not more than six calendar days. It seems like it should say less than.
That may have gotten this.
I'm sorry, I read this before and I just, I just saw it, just now.
When you're writing 22 pages of code, my writing skills, I'm sorry. No excuses.
I'm sorry. Well, clearly I would be overwhelmed.
Any further questions for Mr. Jefferson? Is there a?
Move to adopt. Ordinance, we repeat, we have a, the ordinance is filed about 17.54 and amending Title VI of Animal Control Language and Exhibit 2, am I right, please? Okay. Of this amendment bill as well as 6.08 of the existing code. That just sounds so weird.
It's been moved. It's the second. It's been seconded by Ms. Nyhanen. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson?
Okay, this is the second part of animal control for the evening. Currently, we partner with Blue Mountain Humane Society for Shelter Services. In my time here, it's definitely become apparent that expecting a police department to be dealing with animal control too, it's a drain on the services. And when they're having to run dogs and other animals over to shelter, that's officer, it's not in the city limits, and it poses functional issues. At first, we were looking at taking care of this down the road, but given our limited staff, and it's become apparent that something has to be done. So that's what this contract entails. Right now, the Humane Society, they currently have a similar contract over with the county for about 32 hours a week. They have an additional eight hours a week that they could play with and encrunching all the animal control numbers. And again, as we, if we proceed with this contract, we'll ultimately have to see how the execution is, if it's more, if it's less. But we thought that it was a good ballpark for about that eight hours a week. So that's really what you see before you, is that the main onus of the animal control duties would move over to the Humane Society. I'm sure there's times where police will assist, but at least it's not that the primary onus on animal control is with law enforcement, it'll be with folks who are trained to do that, so.
End of report.
Yeah, exactly. And just to be frank, there is a tiny gap between like the budget, the amount from the fiscal year and then the expenditure, but that could be closed with the additional enforcement, that there is actually someone who will be answering in a more timely manner, the complaint-driven process. But again, we'll see how it plays out.
Questions for Mr. Jefferson?
Just real quick, I went through the immediate and urgent response. Is there someone on call 24/7?
I'm Sarah Archer. My address is 959 Highland Road in Wal-Wal. So to address Council Denver Peterson's question, there is an animal control officer that is on call for emergent situations. Calls for complaints and concerns will continue to go through the central dispatch center. And in an emergency situation, the animal control officer can be called out after hours as the backup. It is not a guarantee of coverage 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, but the benefit of having the staff of the Humane Society supporting animal control is that it isn't just one person.
Yeah, okay. Good, thank you.
Seeing none, it's ended.
I'm here for the City Council to approve the contract with Blue Mountain Humane Society for Animal Control and Shelter Services, as shown in Agenda Bill 17066.5.
Second. It's the second, please, any further discussion, Mr. Jefferson? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes your name and address.
Thank you.
Card, your council. Oops, I didn't. I'm sorry. Mr. Gordon, call Jeff in who you're second.
You're welcome to scooping.
Oh, you have to stand in line on that.
Okay, thank you. This Agenda Bill is with regard to an item that we've looked at earlier this year in January, beginning of January, when we were thick with snow. At the time, it came before council, we were requesting council's direction in terms of going forward with the study in terms of left turn lanes versus parking on College Avenue. If you recall, I'm not going to belabor the point and show all the presentations again. I believe this will be the fourth time, at least, that we've come and looked at this. So again, we're back again, wondering and requesting direction in terms of going out with an RFP to study the situation we have on College Avenue. Typically, really, we're looking at between 6th and 10th Street for the most part, and how the left turn lanes, whether there's options, whether there's impacts to level of services, depending on how we realign those, how do we refine and optimize College Avenue for the benefit of businesses as well as the flow traffic? So bring that before you once again. If you have questions, I do have the presentation from before here available, if people want to go through that again. But I think the bottom line is, is we've had a number of businesses express concerns about the fact that they no longer have on-street parking, especially those right at the corners where right now we have left turn lanes and those have interfered with some of their traditional parking that they had before the project. So that said, if there are any questions, I can answer those. But most, we're just asking for direction in terms of whether you want to proceed at this point with this study. We have estimated that study will cost us about $25,000 to go through, would not be just limited to this issue, you'll also be looking at speed limits as well, site visibility, impacts on the edges of those intersections, all the way up and down the corridor, and then possibly, depending on funding, maybe some signal timing as well. So it's kind of an overall, what can we do to take a look at and optimize the College Avenue corridor?
Questions for Mr. Jefferson?
I'm wondering if this is a question of choice or dis or not, but I've noticed too, driving down College Avenue, when a UPS truck is parked in the parking areas, you're still crowded. And is the study going to look at issues like that? The truck doesn't even favor hitting the line.
We could. I'm not sure what the recommendation would be, given we have just a limited amount of right-of-way. We could expand it to that level if that was desired. Again, I'm not sure what the answer would be, especially if you're looking at an area that doesn't already have just two lanes. There's not a whole lot of options there in terms of where they could go. When we first looked at College Avenue and designing, one of the constraints that we looked at is building the project with 10-foot sidewalks within the right-of-way. And so that kind of really constrained what we were able to do. We had the choice at that time to maybe expand that, but it really would have been, it would have had huge impacts on a lot of our businesses in terms of purchasing out buildings and maybe even having to demolish parts of them and so forth. So we decided to make that narrow right-of-way, what we live with. And at the time, we said there would be a change in the character of traffic on College Avenue, and that is in fact what has happened. So what you're So what you're seeing is traffic is having to, in some locations, at certain times, proceed a little bit more cautiously and more carefully, in particular with our left-hand turn lanes. A lot of folks have objected a bit to the slalom course that they're faced with sometimes. So we're getting some of that feedback, and this study, we could take a look at those items as well. Again, I don't know what they would come up with in that case, it may be that they would recommend, in some cases, getting rear parking in some certain locations.
Any other...
I think I'm a little concerned over the expense of $25,000 for a study that, did we not do something similar in 2012, prior to starting this? And what would have significantly changed since then that would maybe show us different results? Because part of me feels like we're going to pay money and get the same results.
There is a chance. 2012, we did do traffic studies up and down College Avenue. There was some level of study by Keller Associates, which was our current consultant, our design consultant on the project. So yes, we could replicate those results. The difference is before and after. We now have a project in place, we've got the striping that they recommended, and we have the results of that at hand, we can take a look and see what kind of levels of traffic are now visiting each of those intersections and so forth. So it's really more of a before and after, let's make sure, and it's also, at some level, be a refinement issue or effort to try and actually optimize the corridor a little bit, which is something very difficult to do before you construct.
Yeah, sure.
My understanding is, because this project was done with state and federal funding, that they have to sign off on the final construction and accept it, which I'm not, and so I have like several questions wrapped around this. So I don't think they've done that yet. And I'm a little concerned that if they haven't accepted it yet, and we're already looking at changing it, that that might muck up the whole approval process. So although I don't disagree with the need to fine-tune and optimize, we've had, what, a month maybe, since we've had no snow on there? And so people really aren't ready, people are just getting used to the new striping, because you couldn't see it for most of the winter.
Right.
And there's still, I noticed just the other day, there's still construction trucks parked everywhere, so that you still aren't totally getting the effect of the new thing. So I guess, I guess my question is, does starting this now potentially affect getting our sign-offs that we need to get?
That's a very good question. The reason we're actually bringing this forward is, we're trying to capture data before the college students and the schools all go on summer break. So that's one of the reasons you're seeing the timing, besides the fact that this is about three months since when we first made the decision to defer it. Now, with response to some of the other questions, those are good observations, we do not want to jeopardize final project acceptance by WashDot or TIB, two major funders, as a result of going through a study. I don't think it will. The other part of it is, is if we can collect the data now, there's no reason we can't continue down the road and have results sometime after there's acceptance and revisit it after we have project acceptance. Both WashDot and TIB have been waiting for us to provide them with the data to finish off, they've actually been asking, can we complete this project and be done? We have hedged a little bit, we don't quite have substantial completion, we would like to have substantial completion before we move forward and do that completion process. But I would expect within the next, before this study is done, we would have completion on the project. So I don't believe it would jeopardize it. However, that said, I don't think there's any reason we couldn't, as staff, ask those questions and make sure that whatever we do in terms of the study doesn't jeopardize that process.
Peterson, any question?
No, no problem.
You do have someone in the audience who would like to address the panel?
Thank you. Anne Lee Green, Gilets-Eyre 95, College Place. So as the city is moving towards adopting a complete streets approach, which I hardly endorse, I recommend that any study of this nature currently being discussed, use the complete streets philosophy and methodology. Some specific things, spacing of transit stops, the signed transit stops are very unevenly spaced, and their relationship to major activities or potential locations for benches, shelters, or other amenities should be a factor. They certainly affect things like striping, traffic operations, and parking availability. Bicycle operations, the street is not striped with a bicycle lane nor with charros, the markers that remind motorists that bicyclists have the right to use the traffic lane, which is essentially true in any traffic lane outside of a freeway. But bicycle operations, we're not wanting people to ride their bicycles on the sidewalks, but in the street, which, I ride my bicycle up and down College Avenue, and I'm okay with that, but there are some issues with bicycle operations in the current striping, which I think should be part of what's being considered within the complete streets philosophy and methodology. Likewise, issues of crosswalk striping, wheelchair ramps, and those kinds of things. For example, if you are in a wheelchair in Rogers Bakery, and you need to go directly across the street, maybe that's where your vehicle is, or you have friends who are over there, or whatever, you have to cross two streets to get there because of the way the curb paths and striping are done. But my point is that all of these modes of using this street need to be considered in a study of this sort. Thank you.
Any further questions of Mr. Peterson? Mr. Anderson?
I think it's too late to reconfigure our striping, our lanes and our parking spaces and so forth, were pretty much determined when we decided to widen the sidewalks and narrow the streets. The turn lanes are, is kind of a different issue. By the way, I wanted to mention that I talked to a Valley Transit bus driver just before I came into council meeting, he says, "I hope you do something, because the scene you've got out here right now is totally dangerous." The parking striped areas are eight feet, their buses and most other white trucks, including our fire trucks, are nine feet, and then he told me, then their mirrors have to be taken into consideration. He said, "There's just no way that they can be that close to the curtain, still not force traffic over the yellow line in the center of this regular traffic, not dual-wheeled vehicles." But on to the left-hand turn lanes, what was considered on North College Avenue versus South College Avenue? Why, what was taken into consideration when it was important to put them on certain, very slightly used streets on South College Avenue and not put them on heavily left-hand turned lanes in North College Avenue? I'm thinking of A and B Street.
The major consideration there is the T-intersections.
What?
T-intersections as opposed to four-way.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the difference.
Yeah. I mean, does that matter for holding up traffic?
You would have, it's kind of interesting, if you have a T-intersection, you're all going to have a left-turn lane coming one direction. And so now you have, if you're coming the other direction, it becomes somewhat confusing for, unless you stripe it and actually end up with another left-hand turn. The thought was, and I believe the, and I don't have this in front of me, I believe the traffic counts that showed that those level of traffic on the T-intersections aren't as high, and the impact to traffic isn't as great at those intersections.
I sat there and studied the traffic count for days at different times, and that's just simply not true. Some of the areas on South College Avenue aren't hardly used at all compared to the ones on North College Avenue.
Well, that's one of the things we can look at in the study to confirm.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that could be taken into consideration.
There was also an attempt to try and minimize the number of left-hand turn lanes, to be, I should say, to balance that with traffic and so forth, and so that was their best attempt. So where we were pretty sure we could get away without them, we tended not to put them in, so.
So turn lanes, whether they're in Ts or Cross, are meant to relieve congestion?
Yes.
That's the whole principle, right? So that's why I was wondering if we could take into consideration North College Avenue too.
I suppose if that's council's desire, we could expand the study?
Mr. Peterson, any question?
No, it's more just a comment. You know, we have a beautiful project out here, and I think what engineers or planners thought about what was going to happen two, three years ago, or whenever, the process, obviously now we have something, and I really, you know, I look forward to a very small investment on what was a very overall, you know, high expenditure amount, just to fine-tune it. I think there's a few items that we can obviously do here at some point down the road when council thinks is appropriate to take another look at it, to address some of the issues from some of the, as you mentioned, some of the businesses that have some questions, and also just to have a second look at what the final product looks like. This is, I think, a very rational and appropriate process to go through, so. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Okay, I have one more question. So the $25,000 study, or the RFP that you're putting out, that's going to, or they're going to do a study and basically give us, if we want to do this, this, or this, and we can kind of piecemeal the things, and based on their information of what we actually want to do. So we're not committing to making a slew of changes, we're not going out and taking off the striping right now and doing our own study, you know, we're not doing that stuff. We're just going to get a report back from them and be able to decide. Great.
Yes.
I guess just kind of a comment I have is that, you know, going from a left-hand turn lane back to no left-hand turn lane doesn't seem like an unusual configuration. And I just kind of have a hard time seeing a $25,000 study being done as necessary to really making that configuration, because I'm thinking back to Broadway, and $25,000 would go a long way on that project, whatever happens. Right, but it's still not a small chunk of change.
And once again, the $25,000 remind me, this is not just about turn lanes, it's about speed limits, this is, there's a lot more in this than just turn lane, yes.
Yeah, speed limits, this is another question, isn't it true that both on turn lanes and on speed limits, the council can decide whatever it wants?
When it comes to speed limits, you're supposed to do a traffic study before you do that, to give you basis, where I believe that's by the RCWs. In terms of turn lanes, I think that's pretty much what you decide to do, there's no state mandate.
How does that RCW that requires...
I don't know, I'd have to go look it up, but this is...
You know, the reason we have 30 miles an hour on four of our streets here is the council action.
Right, I'm not suggesting that everything council did was by the RCWs, I don't know. I'd have to go back and research that.
Well, I think it's important to know whether we can do that or not, because it doesn't make any sense to do a study if the council knows what it wants.
That's correct, we can look, my understanding, I would look to our attorney, CP, as in recollection, but my understanding is that, and what I have read has been that council does need, my best recollection, council does need to go through traffic study. Whereas the state of Washington has prescribed speed limits for different areas, different kinds of roads, and if you decide to change those, you need to have a basis for it.
Further discussion? Is there a motion?
I believe that we accept the recommended action of Bill Number AB 17010, as stated.
Second? It's been seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
There's further discussion?
Sorry, I have a comment. That RCW that says, there is an RCW that says we have to have a traffic study, it's 4661415, and it was adopted in 2013.
To change turn lanes, or?
First speed limit.
Thank you.
Well, I'll do a first speed limit change.
It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion to stop now?
Can I please get a, who was...
Who were the names?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to be up here, and I'd like to summarize quickly from my previous testimony, and also answer the question you left me with in reference to the university. So, the agenda bill, Act Number 17064, is for Crime Free Housing Ordinance. What this is, is Crime Free Housing Ordinance assists law enforcement, property owners, and renters, the ability to establish, save, or rentiary, and reduce crime, and help create community, this is done through rental contracts, tenant background checks, reporting illegal activity, and improved understanding of rental laws such as eviction processes on landlord versus tenant rights. It's really the city working with landlords and educating, and will be in partnership with Walla Walla, they currently have a program set up where they'll be training people, it's a free program, it's a volunteer program, it's good for the community. And to address your concern, whether it would have an impact to the university on the rentals, I've talked to Captain Chris Butis of Walla Walla Police Department, they have Whitman, obviously, and they've had a very successful program already in place, they've had no issues. One of the nice things about the university, they already have leverage with students and people who live within their residences, so it hasn't been an issue, it's more really about communication and really empowering the rental owners, and it's really up to them to deal with it in secondary, all the time, so.
Questions? See, ma'am, is there a motion?
All motion to pass the recommended actions to the council, adopt Chapter 80.06, Residential Rental Immunity, Slicing Crime Free Rental Housing Program to the City of College Place Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Boppa. Any further discussion? See, ma'am, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, I was going to make it through entirely. Down. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes, you're on the slate. Thank you, Chief. Aggressive panhandling.
All right, we'll move on to aggressive panhandling, this is Agenda Bill Act Number 17065, and again, I'll summarize, the purpose of this ordinance is to protect citizens from fear and intimidation and company in certain kinds of solicitation, to promote business and tourism, and to preserve the quality of life, all providing a safe and proper venue for constitutionally protected activities, so that you can feel safe at a bank ATM and not fear of someone being aggressive and asking for money, or you come to an intersection and not fear of having someone come out aggressively ask for money, those types of examples.
Questions? Mr. Peterson?
Just a question, the ordinance that goes through recognized areas where panhandling, aggressive panhandling can take place is very prescriptive. I'm assuming this has come from another document from another city that's been successful in...
Yes, sir, this has been more from a couple different cities.
And I was just wondering about the enforcement of that, because, you know, I have no problem with anything on the list, I'm just saying, it's, the enforcement, although I was wondering if that was interesting, because there are so many exact locations and scenarios, and then it's kind of a from any street right-of-way or traffic intersections, or, I mean, but you've answered my question, this has withheld the test, so to speak, in other cities that we're aware of, as far as the detailed interaction that can occur with panellers, and yeah.
Yes, sir, anyone with anything else, and this comes with some discretion, and we have a... Yes, sir. Anyone have anything else? And this comes with some discretion and, may I say some common sense while we're approaching these situations, but the idea is to give the officers some leverage to deal with that and help people feel safer in these environments.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Other questions?
I want to hear your comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Of course.
And I can answer your question, Councilman Peterson. I actually looked up a few cases related to enforcement, just because some of the terms, like, I wasn't familiar with. City of Kalamazoo had a panhandling statute, and there were just nuances to this one I wasn't familiar with. So, many of the terms, yes, are borrowed from existing cases that have already been ruled upon, and I think we're well in line with what other jurisdictions are doing, and they've been upheld. So, there's always this subjective area, and Chief and I kind of talked about some of the things that, you know, we might want to stay away from. But I think when your emphasis is on aggressive panhandling versus someone who's passively in a place that has a right to be, there's a big distinction there.
Good point.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there any further discussion?
I noticed that it says that the penalty is a fee that's in our fee schedule. How do those fees get set?
Well, normally, once you're by the council.
So, does that mean that we should maybe do that fairly soon so that they don't actually end up with no fee in there till next budget time?
I'll just add to that. Within Chapter 1 of the College Place Municipal Code, there is some reference to civil infraction. I feel like at the fee schedule that was adopted this past budget cycle, there's other civil infractions besides like this. So this just falls into the group and it covers other items, so.
So it's just basic civil infraction, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson, what is the civil infraction penalty?
I want to say it was, I want to say it was around $136.
How much can you handle in this kind of cover?
Yeah.
I don't think that could just be a hospital business.
$136.
Any other questions for the chief or Mr. Zetel? Would you have an individual person to address the council?
Stanley Green, Kiel Box 95, College Place. So, aggressive panhandling ordinances have been controversial in a number of other communities. What I'm about to say is not my saying that College Place does or hasn't done something, but rather observations based on what I've observed and read about in other communities. And the, there's obviously the goal of making people feel safe going about doing their normal business and that, and then there's issues of freedom of expression. And there, and some communities have been complaints about how the way that discretionary enforcement of aggressive panhandling ordinances has been a tool to rid the community of the so-called undesirable people, whatever class that might be in a particular community. So, while I think the goals are laudable, there are definitely some issues that I think the community should continue to be aware of in moving in this direction.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
You all have a breath? Oh, making a motion? I move we approve Agenda Bill 17065 on the aggressive panhandling ordinance, 17-012.
It's been moved, just there is a second?
Second.
Anything about this? Peterson, any other discussion?
I think I'd just like to comment that in my reading of this, it seemed very well designed to target only those that are being aggressive. For example, being in the street, approaching cars, approaching people that are, you know, using an ATM, and it's designed to not punish the destitute who are, you know, standing on the sign, not bothering anyone, letting others approach them. So that was, you know, my impression of this, and that seems like what is specifically designed to do.
Other discussion? See you then. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Same.
You can ask Mr. Moore if he...
Thank you, Mayor. In this next agenda bill, I just have a very short presentation. Really, there's two parts to this. If you recall, a couple meetings ago, not too long ago, council was pleased to approve acceptance of a TIB award for an overlay for Fourth Street and Academy Way. Since that time, we've had some conversations, and I'm just putting these up again for your recollection and just to kind of orient you to what we're talking about. We've talked with TIB, and they've been pretty helpful in helping us to try and determine how to move forward in funding. Currently, there are two components to this particular project. One is the overlay project. That's really just the street surfacing all the way up and down Academy Way and Fourth Street. The second part of that is the sidewalks. And although the overlay is completely funded, the sidewalks are not. We have about a quarter of a million dollars right now outside of our own local funding for the sidewalks. We're still short by 600-plus thousand dollars. And TIB has suggested to us that they might be, I mean, they've looked at this project before. They say it's still a very good project, and it sounds like they're interested. Again, it's a competitive process, there's no guarantees. But they, they're suggesting that what we do is go back again and request more monies this year for not just the overlay, but for the whole project. And that takes a little bit of a twist here, because currently we have an overlay project, funding right now, I think it's 288,000, something like that. And with our monies, it would make up for the full project for both Fourth and Academy. The problem is, is as they were thinking this through, they realized that they have an RCW that they have to follow that says that once they fund a project, it's hands-off for 10 years for any more funding. So if we were to exercise that current award for overlay, and we were to go back out for sidewalk, we couldn't get it. So what they are saying is that we are in a very good position for future funding, and they're suggesting that what we do is in fact have them hold on to it. Remember, you've already approved it, but they have not signed it, okay? And so it's not effective yet. And so they're suggesting if this is the direction you want to go, they would hold on to that up until October, November, when they get their staff together and make their decisions, and they would let us know at that time, based upon the applications that have been made, what the recommendations would be for projects going forward. At that point, council would have the opportunity to make a decision as to whether they want to hold on to those monies, which we might do if it turns out that they're not going to recommend us for the future, or we might just say, go ahead, and if it looks like they're recommending us for one or two more awards, just say, you know what? We don't sign it, leave it, leave it be, and we'll go for the next set of funding. There is a small risk that their recommendations might not be approved by their board, but in talking to our regional engineer, she said she's not aware of any time ever that they've made a recommendation that it was not approved by their board. So the chance is relatively small, but it's there. So, what I'm doing, what we're bringing forward to council with this agenda bill is really two things. One is, are you comfortable with us moving forward, basically telling them, don't, don't execute that agreement for overlay monies at this time. We'd like to wait, hold off, and see what happens come October, November, when they make their recommendations up to their board. And then second, because it's somewhat related, are you okay with us going out for requests for proposals for final design on this project? We have done some initial design up through, the contract was for 30%. I'm not sure we've done all 30%, but Anderson Perry has a contract that has since expired. At least we've gone past the completion date for initial design. What this would do is take us through the final design for everything. If we are successful with funding in November and October at TIB, what it means is we have to have a design in hand right away to go out to bid so that we can award this project, so we can start building in 2018. So it's incumbent upon us, if we're really serious about getting this funded, and we do want to take the TIB suggestion, to hold off for now, look at full funding for next year, we need to be moving now for design, so we have that in hand so we can build come early spring next year. So with that, hopefully you've been able to read through the agenda bill. It's kind of lengthy, but it kind of spells it out for you. That's kind of the situation we're facing. We do really appreciate TIB's input. They have been a wonderful department. And one of the things that I think has attracted them to the table is the university's interest. We have interest. We don't have a complete commitment at this point, but strong interest in partnering with us and improving, I should say, maybe extending some of the aesthetic amenities of this particular project along Fourth Street. And I think it was mentioned before, possibly streetlights. We don't know yet for sure, but we'd like to partner with them on that. And I think TIB, after they came out and took a look at this project out here, likes doing projects with us. So we'd like to keep that up. In any event, if you have any questions?
Ms. Zetel?
I would like to know if you could speak to Ms. Zantel's comments earlier about the possibility of fourth being extended and apartment buildings put back there. Are you aware of anything like that?
I am not aware of any apartment buildings going anywhere near there, but I'm not always, sometimes I'm not the first to know. Mayor...
John, are you...
I'm not aware of any.
I'll answer that. To my knowledge, there is no plans for apartments over there. The only thing just to be forthcoming having to do with the Hayden Development, there is discussion about an emergency access road for Fourth Street, but that's restricted. It have gates in front of it. It's just for emergency fire personnel to be line it over to that development, show the emergency situation occurred. But those are the only discussions, not about putting a full-scale road through or anything of that nature.
I'd like to follow up on the apartments. Hayden Homes does have, it's not, they're not apartment, it's not an apartment complex, but they do have a product that, that they, that was approved through their PUD to put in, they call it a Y-size product, they built it over in Law &amp; Law, their cottages, they're like one and two-bedroom cottages, that they would retain ownership of and rent out. So, just for full disclosure that they, yeah.
And how far back is that from Wawa? Isn't that a ways?
It is, it's, yeah.
It's on the Hayden Homes property.
It's not even on that, yes.
You can't see it on that slide there.
If you want, I could try and find it on GIS. It'll take me one moment.
John, I have a, the realization is more construction is going to have that direction over the years. Could the city require that Hayden Homes put a fence between that property and the school, or is that...
Their development does call for, as a condition of approval, that they have a six-foot fence around the perimeter, and yet those are installed as each phase is developed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, we're not going to download Adobe right now. Take me one moment, I'll try it some more.
It's an ask for an update?
Yeah. Okay, I think we're successful. I think we're going for it to load.
Yeah.
Other questions?
So the Y-size products would be located approximately in this area, okay? This is the end of Hayden Homes properties, and this is the end of Fourth Street over here. So those Y-size buildings would be somewhere down here. Again, they are smaller cottages, pretty densely grouped.
And fenced?
Yes. I guess my thought was that when they were talking about apartments directly behind the schools, I was thinking about this area over here.
Yeah, that would be a lot.
That would be a city decision.
Yes, or maybe over here, I don't know.
But isn't that Wawa's property?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is Hayden Homes here, though, probably up here. Is that all?
Yes.
Other, other questions for the...
So my question is, my fellow question is, those complexes or whatever cottages, they have been approved and they are going up? Is that, is that what's happening?
They have, they have conceptual approval. They are, that's one of the last phases of their development.
So it will happen?
I have not heard of any change in that.
So it will happen unless there are changes not to happen? Okay, and there isn't anything that can be done about that?
No.
My main concern with apartment complex or cottages is it leads to subsidized housing. It leads to the, not that we want to discriminate, but we do need to protect kids, whether, whatever school they go to. And so that is really my main concern, just the protection of those kids because of what subsidized housing might bring to a community. And so if there is something that can be done, why not have it on the other side of their development rather than be closer to the school? Thank you.
I have a question. What was the definition of subsidized housing? What is your thought on what is subsidized? These could be private homes.
Well, what I understood that he said is that Hayden Home will retain ownership and they will rent out. So when you're renting out, you...
I'd be happy to chat with you, Mayor, extensive experience, and this is not subsidized housing.
It is not now, but it could potentially become.
Now, I'd be happy to chat with you there.
Okay.
Mr. Gordon, any further discussion?
No, just asking for council direction as to whether you want to proceed forward with an RFP and whether they're comfortable with the funding approach.
Well, I don't really know enough about it, you know, to say no, but I kind of lean on staff recommendations, stuff like this. You know, if you think it's best, if we're not losing any footholds anywhere, you know, and if it's, and we could kind of, it looks like, you know, it's likely we're going to come out ahead doing this, we have them all for it, you know?
I think that maybe worst case would be that they may only refund the overlay again. But the advantage there is it gives us another year to get more funding. That funding will go away if we do not break ground by June currently, by June of 2018. If we get another award, then that extends it by at least one more year for us to get more funding and we don't lose it. So I think there's a small risk, but I think at some point we got over $600,000 possibly that we could have in addition to this, so.
I just kind of like to echo Larry's kind of thoughts that we certainly lean on your expertise and thoughts. And it just seems like a good idea, if there's an opportunity here for, to, you know, complete this project in a way which, you know, is most beneficial to the community, like, I would like to see sidewalks in there. I remember when I was in high school, walking down that, and there's this tiny gravel shoulder of the road to walk on, full of goat heads. And the schools there, I think it'd just be an excellent idea to, you know, kind of aim high here, you know, not just go for the bare minimum. So it's kind of just my thought and direction.
Just quickly, I, we do lean on you, but I would like to say publicly, we understand, as you said, that there is a risk, and this is a risk that's shared by council and with staff, that there's possibly that, yeah, it could go south. But, yeah, right, this is a shared responsibility, so.
But as I understand it, the risk was based on an action that has never been taken before, a recommendation's been determined.
To my best knowledge and understanding, yes. They recommend, and usually the board accepts the, I shouldn't say usually, to my understanding, they've never turned down the recommendations, so.
Doesn't sound like, we'll talk, people like Delphine, or even a meeting.
Is there a motion?
Ms. Zetel, please.
I would like to move that we authorize staff to issue a request for proposals for final design of the Fourth Street and Academy Way project and confirm direction to submit final design of the Fourth Street and Poway Way project and confirm direction to submit the 2017 project grant applications to TIB under their three applicable grant programs. I withdraw the current overlay application if TIB staff recommendations to TIB board provide for one or more awards totaling more than the current award under the 2017 cycle.
This is seconded by Chairman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Post the same sign. Chief Morris.
Thanks for having me back. So, in an effort to be fiscal responsible, I present Agenda Bill 17068, in where that is, we currently in law enforcement agency have a 2008 Ford 250 cargo van that was acquired for a brand for towing our incident response trailer. The van's used maybe six miles a year. So, the van was acquired through a grant for the trailer. It was, it's been depreciated over a five-year period, and the van has no remaining, has a low remaining blue book value, and it's about $12,825 according to the blue book. And the water utility company would like to use that van, they have a better need for it, and the water utility has a greater need for the police van, and agreement that the police department can still use the van to pull the trailer when needed. This transaction would take the $12,825 of places into a, an account for the law enforcement and for future equipment replacement. And also, we have a current need of purchasing two police mountain bikes that cost $1,778.68 to replace our older bikes that are beyond their use and time and are to get out, so. Yeah. Any questions?
Mr. Bob?
I was looking over this, and I noticed we were talking about F-250 cargo van. Let's see, I have it here, it says a Ford E-350 Super Duty Cargo. Is that a typo? Should we get the right customer in this value? Question?
I have to, sir, I have to research that again back to you. I'm not sure that could possibly be a typo. I believe it's a 250.
Good, I'm seeing this type of forty value of $12,825. I wonder if that's for the E-350 or the 250. Don't think it's quite the value of the 350.
I might just look it up real quick.
It's just for the water utility, it's in the city, not water utility company.
Basically, what we're talking about is a different fund transfer here.
Right. I just like my dots. My eyes, I was giving my dot sight.
Can we keep you around, Jerry?
Cross your, cross your dots.
Cross your eyes, but your teeth is.
Well, could we make a motion not redo it according to the blue book value rather than the specific dollar?
Or do we need to state the value? Does that, does anybody? Sarah doesn't seem to care.
Do it at the state, the blue book value according to.
Great. Fine. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the sale of vehicle from the current expense fund police department to the water utility at the Kelly blue book value.
Move in second, will you further discussion?
Well, it doesn't matter what Kelly says. I mean, can't we just sell it to them anyway? Why do we, is there a state rule that says we have to do it at a blue book price?
Well, as a person that pays to the water utility, I don't want to have the water utility pay more than it has to.
It's the fair market value.
Fair market value. That's a kind of a state guideline for, so we just happen to use Kelly.
Yes, that's the one that's so bad. Well, I think there's other ones that are out there, but that's the most common practice.
Great.
Move the second and any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Post the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon?
We have the opportunity to join a purchasing cooperative state down in Texas, Houston, Dallas area. It's a, we belong to the state purchasing cooperative. This is national. This has a lot more access to products, services, and vehicles. So we would like to recommend to council that he help authorize us to become a member of that cooperative. It's not, there's no cost. They charge the people, the vendors and so forth to be fee for that. So the city would be no cost and have, open up a lot of availability.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
We didn't see a cost. I'd like to move that the GAC by a local contract for cooperation purchasing by mayor and state.
I'll second.
Move by, decided by Mr. Freeman. Any further discussion?
So does, you made the resolution and the motion?
Well, I, the recommended action, the, the resolution, you need the number?
Seventeen dash four.
Okay. Resolution seventeen dash zero.
You don't see, no further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Post the same sign. Mr. Gordon?
Agenda Bill seventeen oh seven one. This is authorization for staff to bid the Kiwanis Park renovation project. This is a project that we were awarded from the Recreation Conservation Office, RCO, in the fall of 2014, and we're finally to 100% design, and we'd like to build it this spring. So, the schedule is, we'll advertise on March 28th. Well, excuse me, we'll, if we get authorization, we'll advertise on March 30th for three weeks. We'll open bids on April 20th, and then bring, hopefully we'll have a successful bidder, and we'll bring that to council on April 25th for an award, and then start construction within, you know, the next month after that, and hopefully be completed by the end of July. It's a 45-day contract that we're calling four, so, 45 working days. To refresh some of the council members' memories, Kiwanis Park is off of Third Street in Dayton. What we're doing is, we have a very outdated bathroom that's isolated from the park on parcel that's across southwest of Dayton. And so, we have, we'll be building a new parking lot. The existing parking lot is over here off of Third, and it's deteriorated in terrible condition. We'll install a new ADA compliant restrooms. We'll have two, there'll be a family restroom, so we'll be able to use either side. We'll have some nice patio area out in front of that restroom, next to the play equipment. We'll have room for a couple of picnic tables and some nice benches for seating. ADA compliant parking lot and access to it. New pickleball courts, we'll have four of them, the regulation size, and then we'll have a regulation high school-sized basketball court. We'll have storm onto facilities, some new street trees, a decorative entrance sign. It's going to say Kiwanis Park, a place to play. And so, we're really excited about it. It's a huge improvement to that park. It's going to finish it off. If you recall, the Davis project, they made some huge improvements on the north end of the ball fields, and they are, because they're utilizing part of our, our park as their school ground, they maintain the park. We'll have a new irrigation system in this area. So it's, we're, I'm just really excited to see this get going.
Mr. Dickerson?
Could you repeat what you said about the 45-day?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a 45 working day contract for the, to complete.
To do what all, does that involve?
That involves building all of this. The bathroom is a, it's a preconstructed concrete structure that's, that's placed, so it's, there's, there should be plenty of time for them to complete this.
Mr. Bob?
Any plans for the area where the existing bathroom is?
We don't have any plans, other than after the project's completed, we'll likely demo the, the structure there and keep it as park ground for the time being. It is its own parcel. We did go through a short plating process, primarily to dedicate the roadway of Dayton Street, because it was never really a road. But also, the way RCO's grants work is, they are, they are tied specifically to parcels of land, so, and they're forever. So, we didn't want to tie up that ground in case council wanted to do something different. It could be a surplus piece of ground.
So that will be done by city staff, and it's not part of this.
Right. And there's a lot of work that city staff, as public works crews have already done. They've been working at, they took out the parking lot, they're, they're going to be blading all of the grass away, so, and that's kind of our, part of our in-kind contribution towards the project.
Ms. Sheen?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to bid the Kiwanis Park renovation project.
A second.
It's been moved in second, but I, I can't tell who it is, but. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Post the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Hilgore?
Okay, this is, I was asked when we last talked about connection fees to bring back a proposal to you all about doing a study on our sized commercial meter connection fees. So, this is my follow-up to that. So just to run through what we've talked about, when we've talked about it so far regarding connection fees, last August, we had a council workshop where we discussed the residential connection fees, the maximum allowable by state law, and kind of where we thought maybe we would want to be. And then we did another council workshop in January where we followed up on that same discussion and asked for feedback, and that feedback was a recommendation of bringing $3,500 as a residential fee back to council for approval, and then scale the commercial fees accordingly. Then, at the last council meeting on the 14th of March, we went ahead and increased the residential water and sewer connection fees to 3,500. And then, the percentage increase in the residential fee was 40%, so that's what I applied to the sized connection fees. However, in that process of approving those increases, it was noted, noted that our commercial or size fees were substantially lower than Wawa Wallace's. And so, I was asked to come back with a proposal for a study of those to see what might be more relevant fees for us to be charging. So, I reached out to FTS Group to talk to them about this topic, and they basically said we don't need a study. Standard procedure is just to apply the American Water Works Association factors. You apply a set of factors to your residential or your base fee to establish the appropriate charge for each subsequently larger fee. So they gave me those factors. That's what I just told you. So their recommendations were to scale our sized connection fees using those standard AWWA factors. Another recommendation that they had was for our multifamily properties to, they said standard practice is to charge one connection fee based on the meter size that services the property. What we currently do, our current practice, is to charge the residential fee times the number of units in the complex. So if you had like a 10-unit complex and the fee was 3,500, we would have charged them 35,000 for connection fees. Whereas if that particular property only needed like an inch and a half size meter connection, or a two-inch, we'll say a two-inch, instead of 10 times the 3,500, we would charge them one fee of 18,667 according to these factors. So that, that was their second recommendation. And then their third recommendation was that our fire flow connections should be charged according to the size of the meter that services, that is required to service their fire flow needs. So, right now, we literally charge this $3,000 period, no matter what size of a fire connection, fire flow that a property needs. And they're, they're saying that that should really be scaled according to the, the size of the possible need for water volume. So I gave you this chart in your handouts to show you, the top, the top line is what our fees were prior to last meeting. The second line is what they were increased to at our last meeting. The third line is what FTS Group recommended that we increase our fees to based on the AWWA factors. And then the last line is just a comparison of what Wawa Wallace's fees are compared to what they are recommending ours be. So, what this fee schedule does is it standardizes our fee structure according to AWWA, which is basically the USR organization. And our fees do remain below our new verse, so. Questions?
Ms. Hurd? I just had a question about the fire service. When we say according to meter size, so would we charge the same as the connection fees with those meter sizes, or would it be a little bit lower because it's just fire?
No, it would be the, the connection fee for whatever size meter they're requiring for their fire flow needs.
So like, if they needed a two-inch, it'd be the 18,667? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for doing all of this. This is really helpful and impactful.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dickerson?
I'm trying to think it through, you know, there must be a really good reason why council in the past based the fee on the units rather than the meter size. I'm trying to think what that might have been, and when that was done, it was, how long ago was that?
You know, to my knowledge, that's, I have no idea when that was initiated.
I remember discussing it in years past, but I don't remember exactly how that worked. So, so, so we're actually going to be cutting the, the fee in half?
Well, on certain properties, it will decrease, but if you look at the exponential increase on properties that are going to be needing larger size connections, it more than makes up for, I mean, it's, it kind of, it just. than makes up for, I mean, it's, it kind of, it just evens everything out so that we have a standard practice of charging by meter size for everyone.
Seems more fair.
Yeah.
I just was curious what the reasoning was, you know, back in the, whenever they, because they always have a reason.
I don't know what it was.
And every time we listened to the reason, it felt was different.
So, so that's what I found out and presented to you, and you guys can mull it over, and I guess, is this something that you'd like me to bring back? Are you, do these look good to you?
How do you feel about the, like weird numbers? Do you want round numbers, or is this kind of like what their suggestion is, and like not ending in a hundred, like just having a six, six, seven? If you guys are cool with that, I'm just wondering if you need it to look pretty.
I'm fine with it.
We'll make it exactly.
So basically, you're good with using the factors, bringing something back?
Yeah.
The American Water Works Association is the recognized standard for basically all water systems, so I'm very comfortable with using their factors. And I think it, as we're looking at economic development, it's, it's part of having them pay their freight, and given that we're not going to be bigger than our neighbors, I think it's eminently reasonable. So I would love to see this come back as an action item.
Okay.
Excuse me, thank you, Sam Green. So with a fee schedule like this, what about inflation? Does the council have to just come back from time to time and redo it?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gilgore.
Thank you.
We are going to go into a second session to discuss if a legal counsel representing the agency that is related to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss if a legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which agency the government or a member acting in efficient capacity is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussions likely result in personal or financial consequences for the agency. That's RCW 423110A. I would ask you all to leave the room, with the exception of the councilors who listen. Do I get to clap? You are the council!